Thank you all for coming tonight. Sherry, could you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Nicholson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
Here.
Councilwoman.
Here.
Espinoza.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We'll move on down to citizens' participation. And this is the opportunity for the public to have five minutes to discuss something or bring something to the council that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to step up? Go ahead and come on up, Joe. I thought you were here just to visit, to watch.
There's no paper up here to sign. That's my... Hi, I'm Joe Garcia. I live on the south side. Come before you guys quite a few times in the last year and a half, talking about Chapter Eight with weeds and derelict vehicles. Again, I'm trying to preserve my constitutional right for my private property rights for my I did go, I did have a talk with the zoning...
Code enforcement.
Yeah, code enforcement. And I told you guys this last time, that I turned in the whole East Miller block for tall weeds on the alley. When he did come around, which I'm glad he did, he made sure, I did see him pass out flyers east of our house. And when he came to my house, he definitely, he gave me a warning, and I asked him for a written warning. He said he'd be back in 10 days to make sure that my vehicle was, had tags, or was going to cite me for derelict vehicle. The reason why he was going to do that is because I brought all this attention about my vehicles. He says that I'm the one who gave him the information. Nobody turned me in. I turned myself in. So I did, I went down and got plates for my Suburban. It runs, windows work, tires are filled. I did have to charge the battery because I don't, I haven't ran it since, I think the last time it was played, it was 2015 or 16, but it's been in the backyard. After that time, a few weeks have passed, there were, let's see, there's, oh, there's over five properties that have, that are still not in compliance in that alley. I'm not sure if they got cited, if you returned to them that day. I know when he left my house, he, well, I know when he left citing me that one, excuse me, that one day, he did not go put us west of where I live. I don't know if he did that before, I just know I caught his attention as he was driving down the slipper route anyways. But there's quite a few houses that I get my Suburban, I don't know how long it's going to take to get into the court system, so I don't know if those are pity, but I went through the alley today while the weeds are smashed down because of the snow that we just had, you know? But the day that he came by, he drove by to check to see if I had plates on my Suburban, or the day he drove by, it was the same day he drove by, he went through the alley and he did not stop to glance over at the properties that still had the tall weeds or anything. Basically, he came, look, I pulled on his collar, I'm pulling on his chain, I'm pulling on all your guys' chain, I think I need to preserve my property rights. I'm stirring the pot here because I want to preserve it. I gave you guys full disclosure of how many cars I had in my backyard. Before that, nobody knew. Neighbors don't care. I'd ask them all, they don't care. As far as the weeds, I think it's, I think it's just a lie. I think if everyone was talking about bringing down the values of their houses, they would be turning in their property for their neighbors, for the, bring up their property value, but they have too much pride. If I went into their house and stole $10,000 or a certain percentage, took the value off their place, or out of their pockets, they would turn me into the police department. Why aren't they turning them in? I think it's an excuse. It's like communism is what we've got going on here, and I hate to say that. It's your guys' right, but you guys are taking my property rights away. We try to keep up our property, our house isn't the nicest, but we invest what we have. And the style that we have, we've had to come down for personal issues that I don't care to discuss, but other than that, right now, I don't know who's, if he went and checked on anybody else on Miller Street who was out of compliance to return, to cite them or not. I did go to talk with him today, but he was, he was out in the field, so understandable. There has to be a better way. These weeds, I don't know, I think it's all a crop, but look, I'm willing, whether there's a health issue or not, we kept up our properties, so, but if it's a real issue, let's enforce it. If we can't enforce it, why do we have code enforcement? I don't understand it. You know, in my talkings with him, he says it's going to take quite a few years. Well, why can't we start doing something now? What's the plan? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak for the council? We will move on down to the 2019 Employee of the Third Quarter.
Honorable Mayor and Council, if Ariel could come forward, here with me, as I've never done one of these before, and I'm filling in for Scott. The Third Quarter 2019 Employee of the Quarter is Ariel. I'll read briefly what Scott has in her letter. Congratulations, you have been selected Employee of the Third Quarter 2019. Your unwavering dedication to your job, to aspire, to learn, and become accredited in the Building Department have not gone unnoticed. You have a positive attitude when dealing with difficult customers that elevates the image for all with the City of Rawlins. We have all reaped the benefits of your high standards and willingness to give 100 percent, excuse me, 100% in your assigned tasks. I have personally worked with Ariel on various projects, and she does fulfill this to a T. She always has the positive attitude, she always has the work ethic, she always gives everything she has and is very deserving of this.
Congratulations. Approved the minutes of the October 15th, 2019 regular meeting. Councilwoman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 22nd, 2019, special meeting.
Nope.
No.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting. All right.
Do we have a second? We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to that motion?
Can you refresh?
Anyone else? You guys voted?
Yeah. Did you join the meeting?
Where were you at? Did you come up?
Everybody but you, Aaron.
Refresh. Always, I vote yes.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Item B, approval of the minutes of October 2nd, 2019, special meeting, will be moved to the next council meeting, please. And then we'll move on to, down to correspondence, reports, and information, and we have Pam Thayer here to facilitate on some DDA information.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. First of all, I was not here last Thursday for trick or treat on downtown streets, but I hear that I just wanted to give kudos to everybody involved, especially Angie Acavetto, our project coordinator, and we have a part-time severance, Finch. They have been running the office for the last three and a half, four weeks while I've been out of state, and they have just hit it out of the park, and I guess it was another wonderful cold, snowy trick or treat on downtown streets, but we had record numbers again even with the, with the weather. So I just wanted to publicly say it takes the team, and, you know, this is honestly the first time we've had snow on the ground since we started this back in 2006. We've had cold, we've had wind, but we have never actually had snow on the ground in all thirteen years we've done it, so, anyway. So, I want to, I have some, I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop about a fun, You guys were probably tempted a little bit about this as the public was in our water bill that just came out, it said community, downtown community ice rink opening day, watch for more details. So, since I got back, I've kind of hit the ground running. So I wanted to kind of let you know, we've had a great partnership, something with Sinclair Refinery that's been going on for a while, and we will be, have a holiday ice rink, a synthetic ice rink, that we have purchased. We started conversations, honestly, back in September with them, and then with me being out of town, it kind of got put on the fall park, but since I've been back for two days, I've hit the ground running. We were working with Sinclair, Wyoming Refining Company, to purchase a small ice rink, and it ended up just being amazing that Cheyenne decided to sell their ice rink because that's where their splash pad is going. So they no longer had a use for this $48,000 ice, synthetic ice rink with 70 skates and four benches and holiday decorating and rubber mats and everything you could possibly not want to spend $45,000 to $50,000 on. So we happened to pick up this baby for $5,000 that can be used anytime we want, rented out whenever we want, but the good news is we are going to test this little baby before we really decide where it's going. So the plan is, there has been a street closure started, which is again approved through all the departments, a meeting with Amy, or Amy, tomorrow morning at nine, and then fire, otherwise all departments in the last two days have been contacted. We're going to test it at the depot, and as you can see, I've given you guys a map. It will not be the 60 by 40 layout that they had down at Cheyenne, just because we don't have to be flat, you have to have some power, so we've been kind of going back and forth. You can see our idea, again, we're just testing, now, as of today, we came up with another really cool idea, actually Linda Smith did, Councilman Smith did, is maybe putting it eventually permanently, not permanently, but for a seasonal time, maybe back in our lots behind like three fiddlers, you know, maybe kind of redo that area or farther down on that end, but we'd still have to level the ground and do some work. So the plan is, again, I only have two more city departments to sign off on the street closure, is to test this before we invest, and have open skate, starting November 30th for Small Business Saturday, open skate will be free, this will be free, everybody can skate free, they can bring their skates, and there will be, as Cheyenne did, a posted skate at your own risk, that's one of the things I emailed Amy yesterday when I got back, and we're having a meeting tomorrow morning at nine, to make sure our verbiage is correct, City of Cheyenne did it that way, all that, we're going to work on that for liability. But this is a really cool component, and this is one of the reasons Sinclair wanted to sponsor this with us, is on Fridays from four to eight, and Saturdays from noon to nine, we are going to offer nonprofits the opportunity to do the skate rental and make money. So this is actually a fundraising opportunity for nonprofits. So we, DDA, or, I mean, this is, we're, we have somebody who's going to, the boys' swim team is setting it up for us, we're giving them money, so we're all working together. But so every weekend, the skate rental will be, hey, sorry, skate rental will be run by a nonprofit. So we've put out a special lease to the Daily Times and Bigfoot to start getting nonprofits to put their name in if they'd like it. There'll be a $50 fee for them to, to keep skates sharpened or some maintenance, whatever, but I was running the numbers, and as a lone number, a nonprofit for those 14 hours that they would sign as a contract, they could make about $1,000. That's on the low end. And then if they decide to run Sundays, we're requiring them, we'll do the advertisement, that'll be skate rental between four and eight, and noon and nine, that's those 14 hours. If they decide to do Sundays, or if they decide to sell hot chocolate, I mean, the sky's the limit. I mean, I had one nonprofit come into me, and she started running numbers, she's like, we could make $2,500 in a weekend. So that's one of the components Sinclair really liked. Now, I am going to be working with Amy, City of Cheyenne does have waivers that they've created, again, that'll all be checked and everything through Amy. Safety, it is skate at your own risk, that's how they did it, it's just like a skate park, you know, they brought, they bring their skateboard, they skate, so those will be posted. I have talked to Troy, and I had a long conversation about safety from a police standpoint, about having the road closed for a while, he didn't see any problems, there isn't any businesses, I'd like to change that, on Front Street, but you can see, I actually laid out, I've worked with Public Works, and Leroy, and Danielle, you can see that we're going to use Jersey barriers, I kind of gave you a map, so if we look at this map, you can see as we're coming down Fourth Street, the first little, the big block is a Jersey barrier, but in front of the Jersey barriers, there'll be cones, reflectors, so it won't just be, and then this is our ice rink, and so it'll be 72 feet long and 20 feet, 28 feet wide, and a little, what did I call it earlier, the wobbly, weebles wobble, but they don't fall down, we'll have a little kids' area over here, and then the bigger area, and then Blackwater is on board being a sponsor to do two porta potties down there, so we don't have to have the depot open. Backyard Barns is going to be a sponsor to actually be the shed to hold the skates for us, and they can warm up the nonprofits and take their money, and then there'll be a couple more Jersey barriers there. Let's see, what else?
Oh, I mean, is it going to be up in, in that location?
So, so we're thinking, we want to have it up November 30th, and we were just thinking for December and January for two months, but then the downtown merchants, the Mars Committee, thought Friday, Valentine's Day is Friday the 14th, and it'd be really fun to have a skating Valentine's, so we're going to test it. But the thing is, if we don't have a lot of nonprofits that are going to work the weekends, then we may pull it down after six weeks. I mean, we know we'll probably make it up through the second week in January, but so we're, we're just playing it by ear, but I can tell you also that we will have skate rental from one to three during the Christmas holiday in addition. So what we're probably going to do is, we, DDA, will facilitate that, we'll hire some of our summer interns that need some college money, and they can work the shed and sell the skates from one to three, like the 26th, 27th, so the kids out for the holidays will have something to do from one to three, and we kind of picked that time because it was the warmest of the day. So, yeah. So, again, I just, I've been marking this up, and this has been done, the street closure's been done for a while, but I wanted to, some of the departments just getting going, what the heck, Pam, you're crazy again. I've been, I've been just meeting with all of them today to go through any, you know, because when we sign off on these, and it is a longer extended period of time.
Is there going to be enough lighting there? Or are you going to bring in some?
So, with our $5,000 big purchase, there's like, there are six, there are 12 six-foot tall lighters that are in buckets that have cement already, so there's lights that go all the way around the rink. There is two streetlights that are out down there today, tonight, but it's pretty lit down there in that, in that exact area.
So there's just basically portable lamps that go?
Yeah, but there's the street lamps right around the depot, too. There's quite a bit at Depot Park, there's pretty, there's black.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is it just bright enough?
Yeah, I was just down there, well, when I left tonight, but yes, I mean, it'll, it'll definitely, it won't be bright, bright, but it's not going to be, so to answer your question, yes, there's going to be light. Sorry.
Well, that's pretty neat, Pam.
So, any other questions? I think it's, I think it's exciting for the community, so, and I mean, oh, and then Rasmussen, sorry, and we're losing eight parking spots in front of the depot, I talked to Sherry, I went over and confirmed with Mary at Rasmussen's today, so she'll be a sponsor too, that Sherry will be able to tell people who've already rented the depot, and if they rent the depot going forward in those times, that they are allowed to park in Rasmussen's.
Okay.
So we already took care of parking issues, too.
Thank you, Pam. That's awesome, Nick.
It's exciting, you know, who's to say that Brush Creek can't call us when they want to have Christmas in July, they probably want to make it snow, but Brush Creek may, hey, they may want to rent it for $5,000.
And they could probably make it snow.
And they probably could, they'd probably get their own ice rink, but if they wanted to come, rent ours, I would rent it out.
Not going to.
There you go.
Thank you guys for everything.
Thank you, Pam. Now we'll move on down to the approval of the agenda.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Smith?
A move that we approve, the agenda is presented.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Any question or comments in regards to that approval, or that motion, sorry? Ahead of myself.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
All right, thank you, Sherry. We'll move on down to board appointments. We have a board appointment here. I'm Cheryl Bailey. Would you like to come up and speak for a minute, Cheryl? Let us know why you're interested in being on this board.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I come before you because at the last meeting I attended, I heard the fact that the Rawlins City Planning Zoning Board did not have a quorum and could not meet the last time. I used to be on the board, and I did back in 2013 have to resign because of some family things, but the more I thought about it, I've got to get back on, because Richard Wilson once said, with Cheryl Bailey on the commission, on the committee, we will have a quorum, I will be at meetings. I'm very dedicated to the City of Rawlins, and anything that I can do to help, I would like to be on that board again. Already checked with Mr. Espinoza that the meeting is the second Tuesday of the month, I was quite sure that's when it was, but I will make sure I have Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month, open for myself every single time, except this month, if you so appoint me. I'm going in for knee surgery, and I'm going to be out of commission for about a week, two weeks, so I may miss the very first meeting, but I promise you after that, I will attend every single meeting. Thank you.
Cheryl, would you have one?
Cheryl, you said you were on the planning commission previously?
Yes.
How many years did you serve?
I believe I was in my second session of three or four years, and some of you know the situation, I adopted my great nephew, and I just could not leave him to go to meetings. So now that my nephew is no longer an issue, I am doing what I can to be back in the community. I'll be honest with you, a friend of mine said, Cheryl, why are you doing this? You're retired, why don't you just stay retired? Here's my reason that I gave to a friend back in Clarkston, Michigan, and it is from my heart. Back when I was teaching full-time, 40 to 80 hours a week, back in Michigan and also here, I didn't have time to do much in the community in the way of helping. This is my way of helping the community.
Okay. Councilwoman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to appoint Cheryl Bailey to the Rawlins Planning Commission for the term ending January 31st, 2021.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any comments or questions?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
All right, congratulations, Cheryl, welcome to the board. Now we will move on down to Old Penitentiary Joint Powers Board. We have two people here for that. The first one is Ryan.
Grossick.
Grossick?
Yeah.
Grossick? Could you please come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the board?
All right, so, hi, I'm Ryan Grossick. I moved here recently, I guess, in December, to work at Sinclair, and I met Keith Miles, who is currently on the board there, and he kind of recommended the board to me and talked a little bit about what they do, and, you know, it seems like a really neat opportunity, I guess, it's a, it's a really interesting piece of history that belongs here in Rawlins, you know, something that, that I think really could be used in the community to pull people in. You know, something that I think really could be used in the community to pull people in. And I know it does now. And, you know, it's a really interesting thing for people to come out and see. And so, you know, it sounds like it would be really fun to be on the board and to give some new ideas and try to help them along as they kind of pursue all the different activities that they do there. It just seems like a neat thing, so.
Okay. Any questions for Ryan? Okay. First it, Ryan?
Yeah, no problem.
The next one we have is Sherry Schillinger. You want to step up and tell us who you are and why you want to do it?
Honorable mayor and council, I'm Sherry Schillinger. And my dad was awarded at the Penn for years. And so I grew up at the Penn. I played with the Penn. I played with the inmates. And it's near and dear to my heart. And I'd just like to try to do one good and make sure it's based around for a long time.
Okay. And go ahead, Willis.
I move to appoint Ryan Rosick and Sherry Schillinger to the Old Penitentiary and Joint Power Board for the term ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Councilwoman Smith?
A second.
If we have a first and a second to approve both Ryan and Sherry to the Old Penn Penitentiary Joint Powers Board? Any questions or comments in regards to that motion?
There are two positions available?
Yes.
Excuse me, I just have one quick question. I guess honestly, I didn't see this ahead of time, so this makes a little bit more sense. Because I had somebody call me earlier. And again, nothing against you, but there was a concern that if Sherry was on the board, that's a conflict of interest because of her position with the city? I guess I'm just asking for discussion.
Yeah, we have several employees of the city that do sit on some of our boards. I'm not sure exactly how many, but they do sit on the boards. And I particularly don't see that as being any type of conflict.
And generally, I agree. I guess the concern that was put to me is that in that particular position, it's in charge of a lot of the nonprofit information, so...
I don't see as it would be anything that could affect it at all.
I'm just, again, I just bring it for discussion.
I mean, that would be my thought. It'd be at the rest of the council if they see it that way or not. But I don't see as if there would be a conflict at all.
I don't see it is. She's had nobody's in charge of the funding except for the council.
Well, and that's, I mean, there's limited... That's all, I just had to bring it up.
And the funding would flow to the old Penn from us. She does not handle that portion of it.
Correct. I think, I think the concern was more about having the rest of the provision.
We had talked about this in previous years. But there's no statute or no ordinance at this time that precludes any city employee from serving. And I think there's been, if you look around the state of Wyoming, that has been, in some, well, I'm thinking of Sheridan, they did put that in effect. Other communities do prohibit, but we don't. So I don't see anything. I think the funding person would serve.
Well, we have a problem with volunteers. I mean, that's been our argument for a long time.
And I think she would be an excellent asset to that board, so.
Like I said, I just, I said I would ask.
Okay. There's no more questions or comments? Would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Okay. Congratulations, Ryan and Sherry, for the Old Penitentiary Joint Powers Board. Thank you.
Miss Council, we expect back tours that we don't normally get to see.
Now we'll move on down to new business, approval of the payroll. Councilwoman Wells?
I move to approve the September twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen through October twelfth, two thousand nineteen payroll register for two hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Aaron Durst second to that. Is there any questions or comments in regards to that motion? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
What is with it?
Carolyn Gremlins?
There we go.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Okay. And we'll move on down to...
Second payroll.
Second payroll? Approval of... Item B, second payroll. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the October thirteenth, two thousand nineteen through October twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen payroll register for two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
Councilwoman Smith? We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to that motion? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please? My friend's touchscreen is not wanting to work tonight.
Oh, it's got little gremlins. My fingers.
You should move with the hammer.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Just point it the way I can do it. All right, we'll move on down to the approval of accounts payable. Councilwoman Smith?
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of October fifth, two thousand nineteen to October thirtieth, two thousand nineteen in the amount of six hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents.
Councilwoman Espinoza?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to accounts payable? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
All right. Move on down to item D, the bid award, Rollins landfill metal purchase.
Yeah, we better get banging on that.
Honorable mayor and city council, we work to put the bid out for the landfill metal. This is something that we do on an annual basis. And then whoever is awarded, they get the contract from January first to December thirty-first. So we're coming up on our dates with our current person. They will, their contract expires. We are currently with Green River Wrecking and they are paying forty-two dollars and fifty cents per ton for mixed metal. We did receive two bids. One of them from Green River Wrecking for thirty-eight fifty per ton. And then the second one was from Pacific Steel. And they identified that they would pay twenty dollars for tin and steel and then four hundred per ton for clean aluminum. I did, I guess, want to kind of talk to you guys about this because the four hundred dollars looks really good for clean aluminum. But I do have some concerns with that awarding it to them. One of them being space. I, we're really limited on what we have for space, especially after Phase One and Phase Two closure. And I'm not sure if you guys have recently or been out to the landfill at all. We've got four piles down towards the bottom for our tires. We have our manure pile, metal, and then limbs and branches. We do currently burn limbs and branches. The metal gets hauled out, tire gets hauled out, and then the manure can be used for cover. But it's kind of tight down there. It does get really full, especially cleanup times in the summer. Right now, it is a little bit slower. And I'm just worried about keeping those piles separate and still maintaining adequate access for the citizens to go out there and dispose of that. The other thing that I'm worried about is that it's clean plastic. And I did reach out to Pacific Steel and recycling to figure out exactly what that meant. So that would be if you had an aluminum screen door, the screen would have to be removed. If it was, had any plastics attached, the plastic would have to be removed. So a couple, yes. So a couple of issues there. I think it's going to require a lot of buy-in from the citizens, who we already asked to do a lot of sorting when they go out to the landfill. And they are great about it. So that's more burden on them. Or it's more burden on our employees to go in there and clean that material and get it prepared so that it's clean. It can have paint. I did clarify that because I was thinking street signs. But anyway, so what I'm proposing is that we award the bid to Green River Wrecking, who would be higher than the twenty dollars per ton for mixed metal. And then with that award, I would like, that'll give staff the time to really look and see if we have the space and really determine what the cost for us to process that clean material and get it ready and if we would actually make money. And that's something that when we award it next year, if this comes up again, we as staff will be more prepared to address the benefits compared to, or if it's not a benefit, so.
I highly doubt there's really that much aluminum goes into the pile.
Yeah, we, I mean, right now it's...
And the big part is clean, right.
Yeah, it's a lot of, I think our biggest aluminum thing would be our signs. We do get rid of them after so long. But that's something that potentially too, we could work with. Because the streets keeps that separate, maybe we can try to do something different than just dumping it at the landfill metal pile, so.
Good. Councilwoman Martinez?
Mayor, I make a motion that we award the bid to Green River Wrecking for the amount of thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents per ton.
Councilwoman Espinoza, second, sir?
I want to ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Danielle, what do we do with our aluminum cans? That count as clean aluminum?
That is different. So that's at our recycle center. And we have a contract, we do that one, I think, for a couple of years with Interwest Paper. And they pick all of that up. But we do get paid depending on the recycling market. But this is, the scrapyard wants more, the larger things that they can turn around and get some money for and salvage, so.
So I just have one quick question as well. And I think I know the answer because I think you sort of said it. Did you ever, is there any way that, based off of current numbers, you could really sort of separate that between the clean aluminum and the rest of the stuff? Or is that what I got from you is that, not really, but we'll spend the next year trying to judge that?
Yes, so, that, correct, yes. I don't know, I couldn't tell you right now what we really get for aluminum or what it looks like. And that's something that staff is going to try to pay better attention to and really evaluate. And the other thing we were thinking too is we're going to try to go find a piece and see what it takes to clean it and how long and how much manpower, so.
Maybe in a different way, how far does that ton go?
Right, exactly. So are we spending more time cleaning it than what we're going to get paid? And I don't know that answer right now. So we would like that ability to evaluate it over the next year. So, and that's why right now, I mean, I'm short-staffed and we've just got a lot going on that it would just, I think we're going to be better in the long run to take the thirty-eight fifty per ton where it can be mixed. We don't have to spend the time to clean it.
And then spend some time to evaluate to see if it's worth that.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions for Danielle? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Thank you, guys.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
We'll move on down to item E, to approve the Fourth Amendment to the communication site lease with Union Telephone Company.
Honorable mayor, members of council, I'm here tonight with Susan Finch from Union Wireless. We've been working on a Fourth Amendment to the communication site lease to provide a different tower. And the, both the rent and the use of leased premises have been modified. That information's been provided to the council. Your statutory authority to review this action is pursuant to Wyoming State Statute fifteen-one-one-oh-three, which provides governing bodies of all cities to purchase and hold real and personal property for their use, including real estate sold for taxes, and perform all acts in relation to the property and concerns of the city necessary to the exercise of its corporate powers. Again, this is the Fourth Amendment. I did reach out to the city administrator and city staff just to verify that they didn't have any objections or concerns with the proposed lease. What was returned to me from staff was that it's been a good collaborative effort, that the lease has not hindered their ability to perform their duties and they don't foresee this being an issue. This lease does provide for a co... Co-location, thank you. And a commensurate amount or rent for that if that comes to fruition.
Make it a motion? Councilwoman Wells?
I move to approve entering into the Fourth Amendment to a communication site lease with Union Telephone Company. A formal reading.
We have a first and a second. Any questions? Councilman Sanger?
Did you mention that there's a new tower?
The old tower will be replaced with a new. And she does have the drawings available.
Specs are relatively the same.
For me?
Specs are relatively the same.
It's actually going to be a taller tower. Currently, we have a forty-five-foot tower. We want to build an eighty-foot tower and design it for co-location so other carriers can put their antennas on that tower so you don't end up with a antenna farm, tower farm out there. So it'll be one large tower. And future companies like T-Mobile or AT&amp;T, Wyoming PBS, they can co-locate, recharge them. And then in return, you get twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent of that revenue.
Okay. And where's this located at?
Up at North Water Tank.
Okay. Okay.
So this would be outside the corporate limits, not subject to your franchise authority. It would simply be a lease for that property.
And you're going to paint it Rollins Red and put the logo up on there so we can all see that, right?
Well, maybe the market can help pay for that.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Smith?
Just out of curiosity, that's up there and the airport comes over the top. They will have all the lights and everything on it or?
That's up to the FAA. We do have to register with them. And we've already checked and no lighting will be required. They look at the different light patterns. And we're controlled by the FCC, so we have to abide by all the laws and...
Of the F-something-somethings?
Yes.
And that goes through the permit process through their carbon county planning and zoning as well.
And will require a full CUP.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's no more questions, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
I hit my button, don't look at me.
Mine didn't come up. It's me, I thought I hit it.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with seven yeas.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the council tonight, I will call the meeting adjourned. At eight eighteen.